Good evening, welcome to the July tenth Cedar Springs Public School Board Meeting. It is now six forty-five, a few rise of the plagable agents. And we can have a medical instructor slayer.
Yes, trustee Bowser, here, trustee Patton, here, trustee Vanderhyde.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager here, vice president Schochner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you, and we have established a full forum for tonight's meeting. Next, I have the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, vice president Schochner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, the agenda is adopted as presented, and that brings us to. Now open the table. And for last year.
Yay.
I got it, yeah.
I know there's some movement going on, and appreciate the hard work of administration to look at all the staffing needs and thinking through what's best for students. So thank you for doing.
And we've gotten our mailbox, we have Cedar Springs. You have what was called.
That quarterly?
Yes, the quarterly report, so we have all of our honor students and a little bit about what's going on with them, appreciate of that, thank you.
We continue to make great progress with construction. The, the last three times when I've met with Triangle and GMB, they have expressed that the contractors who are currently working on our projects are excited about taking an opportunity to bid on the next round of projects at Beach, that's exciting. Some stakes went in the ground up on the field between Cedar View and the high school for a new cold storage building. That will eventually be used for other things, but right now it's a cold storage building, so that's exciting. Made good progress.
Thank you. Great, moving along, we have our consent items, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved, support.
Vice president Schochner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Just a Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, consent items are approved as presented. Discussion items, first up, we have overnight trip request, chamber choir retreat with Jen Haberling and Linda Teta.
Teta and some friends are here to talk about a little bit about an overnight trip for Chamber Party, has some materials in board book regarding the contracts and the loose plan. Once we get approval, it will be a more tight plan, well Linda, take it away.
Yeah, so I really just wanted to be building our culture more. We're gonna have a really new group next year, as we had eighteen seniors graduate, and many of them were in our top choir. So it's gonna be a hodgepodge of kids that were in eighth grade, or kids that were in the chamber seniors last year, or in the other high school choir last year. So I really just want to focus this year on classroom culture and building, you know, great rapport amongst the students. And I think it's also a good move for recruitment's sake, other kids will see, oh wow, we get to do little trips, you know, and kind of having this view first of our trips. Do some team building stuff there, Camp Henry, it's not very far, but they, they offer a lot of activities that they lead. High ropes and low ropes, things like that, so, yeah.
Any question?
My only question is, I, I, there's a seventy-five dollar fee.
Yes.
Is there a way for students who can't afford that, or whose parents can't afford that, is there a way for them to bypass that, is there something?
Actually, my plan is to have all of the students covered. We have about roughly four thousand dollars in the student internal account, which was fundraised money. Honestly, like before I was even choir director here, there was a lot of money there that I kind of forget about, because usually when I would fundraise money, it'd go in the boosters account. So I really wanted this to be cost-free for all students. Probably planning on doing some fundraising this year, or even asking for donations and saying things like, if your child really had a great time and you'd like to donate, so that this trip can happen again next year.
Well, I'm just a misread something.
I, I don't have any questions, just a comment, just I've toured Camp Henry before and have experienced some of what they have, and just think it's a great location, so, yeah, I was excited to see that and utilizing that resource.
Thank you for leaving that extra work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Righty, moving on to financial update, we have Mr. Scott Smith presenting.
I'm stepping in and filling in for Marty, so the power of parents, the power of the mother, when mom determines when the summer trip is, summer family vacation, that's when the trip is. So Marty will work with his mother for next year to avoid avoid January or July eighth, but this year he had no such luck. So I'm stepping in, I'll do my best, if you have any questions, he's available by phone tonight, we could reach out if there's something emergent, or we can give you, get you the answers to the questions that you may have, and then take that information, I'll leave it in email. So there are three artifacts in the financial update for you this evening, the first is the financial report, the second is a general fund update, the third is the bond budget spreadsheet. So I'll start just with the general report, the bulk of the information in the finance, school finance board right now is really centered on the impact of the state budget that was passed, and how it is impacting different schools, it had a positive variance on our budget forecast. So there were several items, six of them to be specific, that really had a positive impact overall on our budget. So the first is the per pupil allowance, it was an increase of five percent. So that purple pupil allowance went from ninety-one fifty this year up to ninety-six oh eight for next year. The second is something that several groups have really been working on for many years, including the School Equity Caucus, which is a group that I'm a board member on. But we have one hundred percent of our special ed funding is going to be paid for this year. This, in twenty-two, twenty-three, they reimbursed districts at a seventy-five percent rate. We were hoping for an eighty-seven and a half percent reimbursement, but the state budget actually came out with a one hundred percent reimbursement. So that's a real positive thing for us as, as a district in terms of being able to support the unique needs of some of our students, yes.
Good question on that, is that just for this upcoming year, or is it projected for the next seven years?
Well, unfortunately, budgets are one year at a time, and I'll fill you in on that for just a moment, so it's a good thing for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Celebrate the current, yes.
Period. So, so that's an exciting thing for us, the at-risk funds, so overall, there was an increase of two point, two hundred four million dollars to at-risk funding. Districts will receive between eleven and a half and fifteen point three percent of the foundation allowance per each at-risk student. And that variation is based on the conditions upon which the student qualifies as an at-risk student, and so that was a positive thing for us. The universal free breakfast and lunch really didn't have a positive impact on our budget, but it will have a positive impact on the lives of our students, and that's, that's an important thing as well. The fifth item listed there is an enrollment stabilization, so the state is recognizing that districts around the state are declining in enrollment. And so by doing a blended count between the twenty-twenty-three, excuse me, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year and the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, they intend to lessen the impact of reductions in students. We have a similar approach to student count in the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year, remember? Because so many families were opting for other, other considerations when we were in the midst of the pandemic. And so that blended enrollment will be a helpful thing as well. And then the last piece, sixty-three point eight million dollars in one-time lennies were put out there in the budget to help offset, or to help increase the pay for our teachers, and so basically that was a forty-four dollar per student increase for us. So when you bundle, when you look at all five of those impact points together, that is a net increase in revenue over anticipated proceeds from these public schools to the tune of eight hundred nine thousand dollars. So a positive influence, positive impact on the budget. So for the fifth, thirty-one E, the stabilization, or the increase in special ed funding, it'll be just a little over a hundred thousand dollars for Cedar Springs. The enrollment stabilization, we anticipate that being just over two hundred fifty thousand dollars for our district. The thirty-one A, the at-risk funding, we see just a little over a hundred thousand dollars of increased revenue coming in. And then the educator compensation program, we see just over, or just under one hundred and forty thousand dollars coming into the district. Now, to Matt's question is, how far out do we see this, these revenues or these dollar amounts coming in the budget? So at the beginning, or a year ago, at this point in time, the state had four billion dollars, B with a B, in our state school aid balance sheet. They've spent that down, so currently there is a quarter of a billion dollars, so two hundred and fifty million dollars left on the state, the state school aid budget or budget sheet. So unless there's significant increases in the school aid fund this year, which is possible, if we have a strong economy, we can, they can regenerate those dollars back up on the school aid fund on that balance sheet. But if there's a slowing of the economy, or a leveling off of the state economy, and some of these dollars will likely go away. So it's, it's a one year at a time prospect, we're grateful for the options that we have. But who, who knows what the future will bring? So with the reductions that we made to costs over the course of the year in our budget planning, the projection right now is that our deficit going into the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year will be just over one hundred thousand dollars. So originally Marty had talked about, you know, trying to be in that eight hundred thousand dollar deficit range. Because of these increased revenues, we'll be closer to the deficit of one hundred thousand dollars. So we're much closer to a balanced budget than, than what we were a month ago, which is a positive. So any questions on the finance report that I can touch on?
Scott, can I add something about the free and reduced lunch?
Yeah, you're good.
So while the state is providing lunch and breakfast for students at no class, it is still important that families fill out the free and reduced lunch application, and I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but it does impact our thirty-one A funding and our title funding, so Title One, Title Two, and Title Four. We are seeing those come down slightly because lunch and breakfast have been free, and so people are less likely to complete that paperwork. But it does qualify us for more than just a meal for students, it also qualifies us for quite a considerable amount of federal funding. So please share that message with people that it is still important that they complete that application.
And to Jen's point, we're not the only district who will be in that position, and legislators, legislators know that. So, you know, we'll be working both at the state level and at the federal level to come up with additional ways to identify individuals who are at risk and who, who need additional supports.
Do we have an idea of like roughly what that goes to financially? You know, as far as federal funds that we're getting in, that's a million dollars, is it?
Yep. Well, Title Two is close to three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and we divide that currently between our free elementary buildings. Though they are not the highest qualifiers, and then we offset with thirty-one A funding for the secondary schools. You're required to fund based on the percentage of students who are considered free and reduced. And so our highest free and reduced count is that New Beginnings Alternative School. And that is, I'm just looking at the numbers from fall, that is about sixty-five percent of New Beginnings is considered free and reduced lunch. And then going to our lowest percentage, and this is not surprising, I don't know that it's an accurate reflection of truly whether students eat free or reduced lunch or not, but Cedar Springs High School has thirty-nine percent, almost forty percent. So what we see typically is when students are in K one, their families are more of an insurance information than they are as they get further along in school. So it is a considerable chunk of change, and it does, it does, it is required to be supplemental services, it can't be for our standard or instruction, and it is for interventions and additional supports for students who are. And I think thirty-one A, I don't have a good total, and I can look it up. Because we, our allocation was last year, and that might be helpful to you.
And statewide is increased by two point, or two hundred four million dollars.
Right, so our allocation last year for thirty-one A about one point four million dollars, so it's a considerable chunk of change.
With that budget, do they have any guidelines as to how to use the money to give people raises, or how to compensate? No, so that's something that we'll just work with in the end time, I assume? Well, I mean, our staff, they didn't give any, it's, it's really more to offset the, the increases that staff are giving. So it's not on top of the already built-in increases. So our staff had predetermined in our contract like a step, and then an additional two point two five percent increase, so those dollars were just used to help support that. Okay, you're welcome. And so jumping over to the second artifact, the general fund overview. Really, the, the biggest thing of interest is in that fourth column, the peach colored column under actuals, I just want to bring your attention down to the lower right-hand corner. Act, act, in, in actuals, we're showing a deficit, current deficit of just over four million dollars. So there are some reasons for that. One of the reasons for that is that when we pay our CSEA staff, we pay them in July and August for last, last school year. So we're kind of holding in reserve three point two million dollars that will be paying out to our certified staff in salary and benefits for the months of July and August. So it was, it's, it's kind of a bill back, it's, 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 it was already incorporated into the budget. But it's, it's just all about how in accounting you close out those year-end transactions. So part of that deficit of just over four million, four million dollars, three point two million is in CSEA salary and benefits for the pays for July fourteen, July twenty-eighth, and then August twelve. The second piece is that we're still missing our, would not yet received our state aid payments for July and August. And so those two things, those two payments will help offset that gap. And again, that's related to that closing or that year-end transactions or entries, journal entries in the budget. And then we have, you know, again, in, in general, we have expenses posted, and yet we've, we've yet to post the revenues. So as soon as the revenues come in, then we'll post those revenues, and then that number will, will balance out. So this is probably the, the dark worst moment within the, the annual budget, because we still have revenues, we still have some, some exposures, some expenditures coming up. And so that's the reason for that gap, it's nothing to be concerned about, it's just normal year-end accounting.
And then with that, it, it looks like it's coming out of the fund balance right now.
Correct.
But we're, we have our funds coming into this.
Correct, yeah, and that's the school aid payments for July and August. Yeah.
Any questions?
Okay. And then the construction spreadsheet or the construction budget or the bond budget spreadsheet, you'll see that series one, where we're kind of winding things down. And series two, we're gonna start to wind up. So really, the first big step in series two is what we're gonna be talking about in, in just a few minutes, in terms of the, the beach demolition bids. But really, you know, if you think about all of the projects that we've completed with our series one bonds, you know, we're really wrapping things up there, with the exception of the work that's currently being done at Red Hawk. The vast majority of the projects for series one have been tidied up and completed. So one thing you'll note, in that column, under, in the, in the center of the, of the document, under pending, there are several of those cells that are empty, and that's because we're still waiting on receiving some monthly invoices from Triangle and GMB. First, the invoices come through, we receive those from the contractors, they're reviewed by Triangle and by GMB for authentication. And then once they're approved by Triangle and GMB, then they're forwarded to us, and then we, then Marty pays those invoices out of the various bond. And so that's the, the big gap, we're still waiting on some invoices coming through from Triangle and GMB for approval before we finish out and complete the payments on those series one invoices.
We don't do, we usually get those halfway through the next month, so the fifteenth normally, but the holidays slowed it down, so it kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions?
We're tracking well, you know, we our accruals are, you know, just over thirty million dollars, and so we're, you know, we've got a, a variance of about a hundred thousand dollars right now. And once we get those in, then we'll, we'll pay those out and we'll be off to the races.
We'll move forward. And Beach Elementary School demolition bid.
Yeah, I was trying to think of how to mix it up, so that you wouldn't get tired of hearing my voice, maybe use like an Australian accent or something, but then I thought I would just confuse myself more than anyone else. This is an exciting, exciting time for our, our Beach Elementary project. So there are two documents that are in board book for you. The first I included was just an overview of the schedule. It shows the work that we've done so far, and then it shows the work that's on, on the horizon for us. So right now, we are down, you know, on row sixteen, and, and actually for us, we're, we're actually, tonight, we're gonna be on row twelve. So row twelve, we're hoping that you approve the bids for demolition, we're hoping to be able to award those bids, award the bid for the demolition work this evening. But the exciting piece is that the bids are out and on the street right now for the reconstruction. And so that's where we get down into rows sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. So those bids are due, they're actually due on July nineteenth, Triangle had to make a change with that, so they bumped the bids up to be due on the nineteenth instead of the twentieth. But then once we receive all the construction bids, they'll go through and interview the companies who submitted the bids, and then put together a bid recommendation for the board's consideration. The timing of that work is, is very tight, and so that's why one of the things that we'll be talking about a little bit later this evening is requesting to have a special meeting, a work session on the thirty-first of July, which would give us an opportunity to present you with bids, once the bid packs are completed, and then hopefully get approval for those bid packs, so that they can get started on the work of the construction side of things. So that's kind of the overview of the, of the schedule, and then down at the last, down in row two sixty-five, so there's a lot of work that has to be done between July ten, twenty twenty-three, and when we reach the end at two, on, on row two sixty-five. But August one of twenty twenty-five will be buttoning up work on the north parking lots and getting ready to welcome students into Beach Elementary School for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. It's gonna be cool. That was for sure. So any questions at all about the timeline, or kind of where we are in the process? So we'll be awarding a, a bid, you'll be asked to approve a bid recommendation this evening for the entire demolition of Beach. We're not going to be taking down the whole building, we're gonna be taking it down in, in phases. We're gonna have to take some corners off, because if you remember from the visuals that we shared a couple of months ago, that the, the new building actually kind of sits on top of a couple sections of the old building. And so in order for us to get started with the new footings and the new construction, we've gotta take a couple of corner rooms off. Be tight for a little bit, but we're excited, it's definitely doable. So any questions on the calendar or schedule? Okay, then the demolition bids, we received three bids, one from Pitch Company, one from Gore Associates, and one through Specialized Demo. Interestingly enough, the three bids came in within six thousand dollars on each other, which means that, you know, from the perspectives of Triangle and GMB, they felt really good about that, that the bid specs were clear, the companies bidding on the project had a good sense of what, what the scope of the work was, what was expected, and also understood the timelines, you know, this is gonna be a different project, it's not like they're gonna be able to bring their equipment in and take down an entire structure and then, you know, haul off the waste and, and, and move, move their equipment out, they're gonna come in, it's gonna be more of a precision project, where they're gonna take down some sections of the building, then they're gonna build new structure all around it, and then they're gonna have to come in and with precision, take down the rest of the building, one is sitting right next to a brand-new structure. So it, it'll be a, it'll be a good project. Triangle was very confident with all three bidders, they're, they've got very positive experiences with all three companies. Their recommendation is for us to go with a low bidder, go with specialized, and their recommendation is to award the base bid from Specialized Demo in the amount of three hundred twenty-four thousand dollars for the demolition of Beach.
So there was a fourth company that had requested a bid package but didn't submit one, is that what I'm seeing there? From ProTech?
Yes, from ProTech, thank you. Yes, from Pro Tech. Thank you.
And just to clarify, just for people that might not be involved, but. The bid line, the bid timing doesn't always meet the calendar of a course, that's why we're.
Correct.
Going to a patch here.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, we could, we could wait and go with a second read, but then it pushes the scope of the, the work back.
My only question was what Trent already asked, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. We did it.
Alright, so we'll see that on for action and. Should please support. Already moving on to a cluster of Neola policies.
Yeah, so. Twice a year, um, Neola, uh, pushes out a series of, uh, recommended policy changes for boards. They do one in the spring, um, and then one in the fall. Uh, the spring policy updates came through, um, and so there are a series of recommendations that we have. I tried to group them, uh, because, uh, while, uh, some of the items, uh, were listed together. They all share a common theme and I'll talk about those, uh, as we get into the, into the overview a little bit deeper. But, um, the first document that I've shared with you is, uh, just a, a, an overview of the policy updates. And, um, for your, um. For your benefit, probably page three is where it gets, uh, most beneficial. Uh, because it, when you get to page three, uh, under the bylaws and policies, that's where it starts to talk about. The individual, uh, recommendations that they've got listed and they just give a little bit of rationale, uh, as to why the recommendation is coming through. So that's the first, um, that's the first, uh, document that you've got in the pack. So the second one, uh, again, I tried to group them, uh, together. So, uh, there were several policies related to the use of tobacco. Uh, so one is policy sixteen fifteen, thirty two fifteen, forty two fifteen, fifty five twelve. And seventy four thirty five, all relating to the use of tobacco. If you bundle, if you look at those five policies together, you'll see that the recommendation. Uh, the language changes in, um, in, uh. Sixteen fifteen are the same language changes in thirty two fifteen. So they changed, they, they carry the language over from, from policy to policy. But, um, you know, thirty two, excuse me, sixteen fifteen is the use of ta- tobacco by administrators. Um, uh, thirty two fifteen is the use of tobacco by professional staff. Um, forty two fifteen is by support staff. So they want continuity from group to group. Um, and so that's why you see the same, it, it's very much routine from, from policy to policy. So that is the use of tobacco. Um, really just some clarifying language, uh, nothing of significance, uh, in terms of changes there. Um, the, the next, uh, batch is around the continuity of organizational operations plan. Uh, that's, uh, eighty three hundred. Again, just some basic, uh, language changes in that. Uh, no real structural changes, uh, to note. Uh, jumping over into, uh, twenty six, twenty three on student assessment. Uh, again, just some basic, uh, formatting change, nothing of substance, not going to radically change our, uh, operation or our approach. Uh, but just providing some clarification of language, mostly around, um, state and federal grants for, uh, the administration of assessment. Um, under procurement with federal grants and funds, uh, again, just, um, making sure that when we are receiving funds from federal grants. That we are following appropriate protocols and providing proper evidence of, uh, appropriate expenditure. Um, not a significant amount of change in that document as well. Um, so, uh, again, it doesn't necessarily, it will not have an, an impact on our operation. But it just provides greater clarity for members of our team as they're working with federal, uh, grant funds. The, um, information security and just providing some clarity, um. Information, uh, technology security is a big item. Um, you know, districts, uh, around the country are being, um, exposed to, uh, for ransomware. And, uh, their, um, information being taken hostage. And so, you know, districts are having to go to greater lengths to make sure that that information is protected. Um, and so the policy language just provides greater clarity for our tech team and also, uh, for the team at the I S D. As we work to keep our servers secure. So that is under technology, uh, animals on district property. Um, the only real difference here, uh, is that, um. So i- in this policy, they talk about service animals. Um, so those are animals that are required for an individual who has, uh, a specific need. Needs an, an animal to provide them with assistance, um, so that they can have a more normalized experience. Uh, but then they also talk about non-service animals. And, um, the only real substantive change in the policy language, uh, first they do adjust the order. So in the previous, uh, order of language within the contract that, or the, the, uh, policy language. Talks a little bit about an overview, then it goes, um, uh, non-service animals, then it jumps into service animals. They put service animals first, so they move the non-service animals down, um, into the order of the flow, uh, on the, on the policy language. And then, um, the only change that they made, uh, with non-service animals is that. In the previous language, uh, is that, uh, at the discretion of the principal. Um, the individual may have to provide a current satisfactory health certificate. Um, or report of examination from a veterinarian, uh, for the animals in question. They pulled that language out, um, unless asked by the principal. They just made it a generic. If you've got animals on campus, they need to either have a health cert from a vet. Uh, or they need to have, um, just some report of an examination, uh, from a vet. And for, that's really just a liability issue. Um, if we had a contaminated group of animals on campus. A student or staff member was to get sick and it came back that the principal, uh, uh. At, said, hey, you don't have to worry about getting those animals checked out and it just increases the exposure of the district. Uh, to liability. So that's their recommendation. Um, it's really for us, it's.
Yeah.
I, yeah, just when I read the, the overview, it talked about how it doesn't recommend for that particular policy. Now I gotta look it up because I can't remember the exact wording, but it made it sound like they don't actually even recommend. It had to do with, uh, providing some structured options dur- regarding therapy comfort animals. Yeah. And Neola doesn't recommend including such animals, yada, yada, yada. Yeah. The copy that you gave, that you have in board book is not what they're not recommending, right? It's what they are recommending without the stuff that they're not recommending. Yeah, yeah, we do not have. Makes sense. Yeah, you're spot on. So there are, there are service animals. Um, if a student, I had a, uh, when I was a middle school principal, I had a student who was blind. Uh, he had a golden retriever that helped him get around the building. So, um, Hawkeye was, uh, his service animal. Um, we have animals, um, our egg science program has rabbits. So that would be an example of a non-service animal, but still a part of the curriculum, a part of the program. Um, some districts have therapy animals, so animals intended to give comfort. Uh, or to provide supports. Um, as wonderful as many would say that would be, um, it's really, um. If, there, there are also individuals who say that's just not good practice. While it would be wonderful for some, it's not great for all. Uh, and so you just have to be really careful and mindful about that. So Neola's recommendation is for, for districts to not have, uh, therapy animals on campus. Service animals, yes. Um, you know, animals for an egg science program, yes. Uh, goldfish in a science room, yes, but therapy animals, they, they would wise no. Okay.
Yeah. I was gonna ask about goldfish. I know, it sounds really petty, but I mean, what do you do in a situation like that? I mean, you don't have a, I mean, can you still go to Miter and get a goldfish or a gaster bee? I mean.
Yeah, you could go to Meyer and get a, or you can, I'm sure, get a some type of certification.
But.
Yeah.
For the little chicks, that's, I, I was really thinking of.
Yeah.
A lot of our, you know, I know we've done a lot of the little baby chicks and things like that.
Yeah, again, this is, uh, remember Neola is going to provide you with the most locked down language possible. It's like your insurance agent. Don't have transplant in the back half. Uh, so this is, that's the best practice to not have. To not give authorization for any. Now, we could, we could modify this. That's the nice thing. We've got time to work. And so we could draft our own. Um, draft our own provisions, but the farther we drift away. Um, the, we're just, we're a little bit more vulnerable than what we would be if we take that lockdown. That's why the, the language, um, in our current policy, I, I personally like. Um, with the principals, um, you know, it gives the principal some, some room. Uh, to make some, some choices like that and not require a vet, uh, certification for hamsters or goldfish. Or chicks for the eggs. But that's something, you know, we can think about that. You can give me some feedback, uh, and then we can tackle that, uh, either at the, uh, one of our next meetings.
So probably have two or three meetings.
Yeah.
We've got.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Yeah, you just want to be reasonable. That's the thing.
Yeah.
And you don't want to paint yourself so tightly into a quarter that you can't.
Right, I totally understand, but yeah, I gotta be a little bit realistic too and.
I'm, I couldn't miss the two, and I know it doesn't look like it was in here before, but obviously members of the community will walk their. Their pets on district property and according to the policy, I don't see, it doesn't say during. During hours of operation, it doesn't say during activities, it says no, you know, it's not. So I just wonder if that's maybe something we should think about as we're.
Yeah, again, those are all those, uh, all those, I, I can tell you what our insurance agents would say.
Yeah.
You know, if, if a family is walking their dog on campus. And there is an incident and the dog bites, uh, another person or, you know. Um, yeah, no dog, and you're in the best position for the district is to have. You'll revert back to a policy, isn't, we don't allow. That's, you know, animals on campus, they're not permitted.
We have a done school.
Uh, they, again, their position, because, you know, it's, we don't live in a perfect world. It's such a tough. It's such a tough position.
I mean, typically, we could have a policy and people could still walk their dog on our property.
Well, yeah.
How do you bother?
Yeah. Yeah, right. But your anchor position should be. Yeah. But if we're going to have that policy, we, we need to at least let people know. We can't just fall back on it when something goes wrong.
Well, it sounds like we've already got that policy.
Well, right, that's right. We should, we should have signs or something that, though, so that people at least are aware of it. Not that I want to discourage people from walking their pets on our property, but if we're going to have that policy. That we're going to fall back on if something happens, that feels kind of like we're setting them up. Like, we're not going to say anything until something bad happens and then, whoa, we're not doing anything. I know. So, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have a good answer.
Yeah. Everybody, you're researching, we can.
But I did, I did find it interesting. I did want to look. I looked at Lowell's policy because I know they've got a strong egg science program. I looked at Caledonia. I looked at Montague. They all have this same language. They don't have that principal provision in there. In their document. So maybe they, our boards didn't have this rich, that conversation about us. Maybe having some variations for the principals.
Or maybe that's just another way we have a best practice that our neighbors could learn from.
Might be a matter of having a policy and then not following it.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering too.
Yeah. Um, the school safety information is just a general update, you know, as we continue to grow. Uh, in our capacity to provide, uh, a safety, uh, safer school environment. Uh, this just aligns the policy language, um, in putting some additional ownership responsibility on the superintendent. To make sure that we've got proper protocols, proper training, proper things in place. Uh, and so it's, uh, policy eighty four hundred. Um, uh, ninety one sixty is actually, that's a policy that could be bundled in with the tobacco. Uh, policies because it really just relates to visitors on campus with the utilization of tobacco. Um, and then, uh, policy ninety seven hundred, advertising and commercial activities. Uh, it's just a very minute set of changes and recommendations. Um, and then the last one, uh, in the packet is administrative guidelines. It's not a policy recommendation, but it's more just how we operate. Uh, it does not require board approval, uh, but I did include it in the policy just to provide. Uh, clarity around, uh, our purchase utilization of our purchase cards. So, any questions? On the twenty twenty three round of recommendations. Do we know how many per, I mean, somebody knows, but can we know how many purchase cards there are out there? I remember a decade ago, there was a lot. Yeah, like pretty much anybody had a credit card connected to the district and I wondered. Yeah. Where we were at with that. I know we've really tightened that down. I don't know exactly how many cards are out there. We can find that information out for you. Yeah. I did expect you to know off the top. Yeah, I mean, I, it was easy in my previous district. We had zero. Um, so that was an easy, so I got here and it was like, what? You have purchase cards? It's crazy. Um, but yeah, we can get that information for you. Thanks. For sure. It, it does, it, it's a convenience thing, uh, but then you've got to monitor it and that's, that's just. Um, and that's what these administrative guidelines do is they just provide greater. Greater pathways or greater clarification, uh, for those using purchase cards. That's it for the Neola updates.
And you don't have to hold your thoughts until the next meeting, like, you give some of, with a question, get emailed. But we've got a couple reads on this.
Would it be helpful if I, um, because I can go in and edit and I can give you language, how it would look. Under the animal on campus, if we included that, our current language back in the policy. Uh, just so at least you could kind of compare and contrast between the two.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I, I think it, I think it's interesting that we, uh, it sounds like the goldfish thing or the baby chicks thing, they have in some discretion.
Yeah.
Makes sense, particularly since we have such a healthy egg program, the science program.
And, you know, maybe we could do, you know, instead of just putting that all on the shoulders of the principal, maybe it could be the principal and the superintendent. Or something like that. That gives us another measure of, um, just consideration when making some of those decisions.
Uh, just another thought. So. For some of the sports activities or extracurricular activities, especially like cross-country. There are a lot of people that come out early and have dogs and it's kind of thought, it's a nice, nice thing. But obviously we have this policy and, yeah, it's like, okay. Uh, you know, is there some way that we can incorporate, uh, the, and. Work with Heidi and, and, uh, legal on this to put the onus on the element. Of, you know, they are responsible for their animal, their property kind of thing. So, I, I don't know that we're going to stop people from doing that, especially after the early COVID. Um, it seems like a cost or a part of paying them. Even more so than what they were. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, how do we, how do we accommodate that?
Yeah, let me just see the unit and see if.
And I know it, it's not just us, as, as we go to other districts, you know, because we're in cross-country and as we go into cross-country, I mean, it's. And that's during cross-country, as we go into cross-country, I mean, it's. Average value. So, the outdoor movie that we did with, with the fair cast, so, but you also have people bring their guests.
I've seen people drink dogs in little bags in the basketball and volleyball games.
Seems like a bad watch, but. Have you seen that one yet? But yeah, it, it just seems like. It needs a little research, so.
Yeah, let me do some digging on that. Thank you.
Good points, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to discussion item E, annual school bond loan application.
Yeah, so this is, um, an application that we, um, submit annually. Uh, to participate in the school bond loan, uh, fund. And, um, so it's just, nothing is, uh, really changed from the. Previous applications other than tweaks of the numbers. Um, so I've got the copy of the school bond loan application. That Marty has filled out, uh, for your review, and we would, uh, ideally, we've got an opportunity for a second read because we have. A meeting, uh, hopefully on July thirty-first. Um, but that's, we would, we would need to submit that application or Marty would need to submit that application. Right after the meeting, number thirty-first, so. Um, nothing's changed, uh, it just, we look at our, uh, the bond management calculators and lots of numbers. Pretty straightforward.
Any questions on that?
Well, I think I've put a motion on the table, but. So Marty didn't have to do it at the end of the meeting. Um, I'd like to move that we take, add, add to the agenda and take action on tonight, so he didn't have to do it after the meeting. You don't need a second, if it's a standard document, so I mean. Oh, okay, alright, I just don't, I don't, I might, I just wanna make sure I'm not putting extra pressure, I mean, our staff does so much even during the summertime that if we could take any weight off, so. If, if we thought that that was undue burden, then.
No, I, I would rather honor some time, just in case people have questions. I retract my.
So, no more questions on that, so. Our last discussion item is the twenty-three, twenty-four handbook revisions, this is our.
Third or fourth month of reads on this one. So we had everything, uh, brought before you in, uh, the, the June meeting, then the ad was the transportation. Handbook, but hopefully now, um, we've had an opportunity to go through those documents and. Hopefully, we're ready to go.
I have one small thing, it's not even really a content issue. I just wondered if someone wanted to look at it on page fourteen of the preschool handbook. It looked like the spacing was kind of wonky on the left.
Yeah, so one, once we get approval on the, um, content. Then we'll go through and make sure all of them. We're, we use that company, a partner company called Bulletproof. And they help to make sure that all of your grammar, all of the layout is, is appropriate.
Yeah, the thing I, I say this every year, probably, I probably already said it for these, but I don't care for the dress code. But this is about the revisions and that was not touched, so I feel comfortable voting, because I'm just voting on the revisions.
So before we get there, I'm just gonna put out the law while we're in discussion, does anybody have any quandary with calling it all as presented in one vote? Or I could call some more and get there. Alright, that moves us to the point of our meeting where we have a comment, and this time we entertain a public, if anyone would like to address the board for three minutes, we would. Like to hear from you and just leave your name and be sure we know how to contact them, do you have any papers on paper?
Sue Wolf submitted, uh, requests, alright, so Sue. The podium is yours.
Can I stand here? Um, I just wanna expand on our agenda, I have a gratitude. And I just hope you'll give me a few minutes to say thank you, and thank you from the bottom of my heart. There's a few specific things I'd like to thank you for. Um, I'd like to thank you for opening up the old Hilltop. Course for community pickleball. And, uh, Mr. Scott has made a crystal clear, there's a long-term commitment there, but he has been great to work with. And there's rarely a good weather day that somebody isn't out there playing. And I hope it looks a little better and this weekend I went by and there was about twenty-five people there, I wish you could have seen it. But they had their lawn chairs lined up, there were little kids, there were more mature people. And they were playing and they were exercising and they were laughing and they were cheering each other on and I'd go, oh, wow. Thank you Cedar Springs Schools for, for allowing that, I know it opens up. Potential problems and, and stuff, but it's awesome, and then to go into those beach school this last couple winters. Again, awesome, so thank you for that. Um, secondly, um. Thank you for opening up your campus again for the alumni reunion that was held last one. Um, and this is for people who graduated fifty or more years ago, so all of you aren't gonna be in rent for a while, yeah. We maxed out with the allowable four hundred people and it was awesome and, um. Our very own, we, we have a guest speaker usually and the committee decided to invite the education foundation. And Audrey's done such an amazing job getting the word out and we thought, well, what better audience than graduates, an opportunity to pay back. And Audrey being Audrey brought written information of, on a screen presentation. And then she and Chad did a verbal presentation that was outstanding, and that'd be brief, you know, because. They like to eat, but, um, anyway, it was just so well done and I think just so far we're about five hundred dollars. But Audrey and I hoping that's just, just the tip of it and as people become informed and aware. And it'll, it'll really grow and it'll give all this older people an opportunity to, to pay back, so. Um, the maintenance staff, Alexis and her crew, Holly Hayworth, and, and her. Crew just did a phenomenal job, all the people were so excited to see the new cafeteria, it's beautiful, it's bigger, it's bright, it's cheery. The food was delicious, it was just another really, really happy moment for our community. And we appreciate all the, the school people that made that possible. Also wanna thank you for continuing your partnership with the North Kent Community Enrichment. Organization, and I think we're over forty years now since it was formed. And again, Mr. Scott serves on that committee. Um, I know we went through some hard times with COVID and numbers were down and the budget was tight. But by golly, that board pulled it together and Jamie did an amazing job and there's a good solid. Uh, financial basis to it and our community continues to gather and enjoy, um. Your facilities and other facilities and it's a really, really good thing and. Um, Mr. Scout, but if you don't know, maybe he told you, the Parkinson Red Board just recently applied for an eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from Michigan. No matching funds necessary, it's for Brandon Pickleball Facility, uh, at one of the partners' facility, which is Soul and Township. And, um, I know it's a very competitive grant, but. All the units Portland and Soulland and the city and the school teamed up together. To work for the greater community and make this grant happen, they pulled in resources, they provided resources out of their own budgets. They just figured it out, uh, they did an amazing job and Mr. Scout wrote a wonderful letter. Highlighting the benefits of such a facility in our greater community again. And we gotta keep our fingers crossed, I don't know, but regardless, it was a total team effort, it's exactly what I think the founders of the. Um, I call it North Kent Parks and Rec envisioned, is everybody working together for the greater community, so. Amen again on that one, and I'll try, I, I, I'll also wanna thank you for your partnership on Engaddy. Um, we're so excited that that program is going to be allowed to get going again this fall. We have a, um, a new director, we were, you know, with COVID and stuff, we understand completely, had to shut it down, but. The middle school principals really have wanted to bring it back. Knowing that statistics clearly prove that for six, some of the eighth graders. That time between when school is out and when parents get home. Is, is a very vulnerable time and sometimes life-changing decisions can be made during that time. And what the principals have told us is that they just saw a lot of the things come through Engaddy. And the new director is actually an employee of the school system, so, um, she's with the food service. So she has a real passion for, um, the children and. We're just so grateful that she is, has some great ideas, so we look forward to any, you know, feedback you might wanna give us. Um, we wanna make it safe and we wanna, wanna make it fun and, and that's the goal of Engaddy, and it's free, it's after school. So, um, it's an extracurricular, I guess you call it, opportunity, but. And then, um, I wanna thank you for that newsletter, like Peggy said, it's just outstanding, it's just gives us all, all of us community members that aren't always. Involved, to just see all the great things going on and, and it highlights just enough information to keep us all. Cheering Cedar Springs on, it's really well done and I appreciate that. Just two more, and then I wanna thank you for choosing, um, Mr. Scout as our leader. His soul of collaboration, positivity, of respect. Are so wonderful. Um, I'm still in awe that, a few months ago, on a Saturday, cool, somewhat rainy morning, he and his wife chose. To come and pick up trash in town as part of the community building without the team. I'm like, oh my goodness, but that's just him, um, and I share my. My thanks on, not only my personal experience, but we worked together on a few different things, but. Just my interaction with students and their families and the entire education team. They are all feeling the same thing, just experienced in his soul on how he works together. And his strategies and his techniques are just a real, real blessing, and so thank you for bringing him in, um. Great choice. And then, um, last but not least. Thank you for your continued service. Your, your mission and your passion to serve not only our students and our educational team, but our entire community. Is a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I know these last few years you faced some unique challenges. But you per, you persevered, look at you, you're still here, just one new person. But, um, I know you've never wavered in what, why you're here and what, what it's all about and. I hope you know you are appreciated, your, your time could be spent doing so many other things, I'm very aware of that. But you continue to choose our students and our staff and our community and, and you really are appreciated, so. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Did you have to submit early, earlier to give?
No, no, you may have three minutes if you would like to.
I'm gonna just, I'm watching you guys. I have to follow up on Sue. I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and hopefully, I can probably with it. Many doctors, they said, I've never watched, so, any chance I get to watch albums, but. They said I only have a day, a hundred million steps, yeah. Uh, my name is Mark Laws, I'm a resident of Cedar Springs. I don't have any kids in district, but I've had kids in, uh, four different districts across the state from. North Muskegon to Saigon out to Troy and Warren, so I've got, I have a lot of experience with that and I got a, a whole load of grandkids now that, uh. I get to enjoy, uh, anyway. My kids did well in school, uh, I got one that works in the DA's office in Home County now. Well, probably, I've got another one that didn't go to school, but has the entrepreneurial spirit, now has her own beauty shop. Got another one that's a nurse that works in autistic, uh, facility offices. So, uh, my kids took advantage of their education and have done well and that's great, so. And based on, uh, just a nice meeting, I can see that we're gonna keep that going here in Cedar Springs, so thank you for what you guys do. The one thought about the. The count, student count going down is a little bit, uh, disconcerting and. And should be, uh, of worry, I don't know, to you guys or the principals or whatever, but obviously something's not going. Right, or mass numbers of people in a macroeconomic kind of a book, if you got people moving somewhere, something's happening. And typically in a buying and selling environment, they're obviously finding something they like better somewhere else, I don't know what kind of things. We need to think about, but that's what we get the Scott for, right, he gets to think about all that kind of thing, so. Uh, and then also you talk a little bit about the economy and the numbers, and if you look at what's going on now. And compare it back to two thousand and six. Oh my gosh, there's way more bank failures now, which you're not hearing about, because they don't tell you. Like, if they're looking in the right journals, you'll see it, lots more bank failures, it's not gonna get any better. So I know you guys only looking at a year at a time, it's not gonna get any better for quite some time, because how long did it take us to climb out of two thousand and six? Eighty-three years, it'll be a little bit longer this time, so keep that in your minds when you're thinking. It's not gonna get any better, it's going the other direction, so keep that, keep that in mind, because if you're prepared and ready for it. You got no problems, and I don't know how many of you know that a really high Chinese official detected. And he's now with the DDI department, which is similar to the CIA, only it's a DIA, because it's in the Defense Department. He said World War Three, he's gonna be caught with medical viruses and IT viruses, so. Prepare yourself in those areas, we've been exposed to a lot of it lately, it's gonna come a whole lot harder and a whole lot faster. Based on this guy from China, who has been, uh. Verified that he's not just pulling stunt, he's given us good information and whatnot, so, well, find out about that guy too, that's a, that's incredible that we were able to get a. Defector that high up in their government, but. Anyway, just, just some thoughts based on what you guys were talking about, thought I would share that with you, and then let me share a, a good experience, uh. Five, six years ago, one of your students was fifteen, sixteen at the time. I don't know if he ended up graduating, I think he did, he went back after words, because he got into some trouble. And he got to deal with the detention guy for a little bit, but he's come back now, he's twenty-two, twenty-three. He's got his contractor's license, he's got his own construction business, so, and the guy that made the difference for him. Uh, was Steve Washington, I don't know how many of you know Steve, but he's probably not even around anymore, probably, but he was your guy. Assigned by Kent County Officers to kind of be here, but Steve was able to build a relationship with him. Helped him get through the process that he had for getting involved with, uh, some law enforcement, whatever, but. Uh, cared for the kid and the kid noticed it and he's doing great, I ran into him the other day and I'm just like, watch, right? I'm proud, I'm proud of you dude, because when he was in trouble, uh, his mom was having a hard time and. And, and myself and, uh, the owner of the Amish, uh, furniture store before he left town, right, we kinda. Put our arms around him and kinda be like his grandpa a little bit for him, but, uh, and, and. Anyway, so you guys are doing great and people like that step up and it's good to have that kinda overlap and stuff and, and I love Sue. Sue and I go back to a lot of, a lot of different things from Redland, with CBDD to everything. Anyway, she's got the community interested at heart, so I'm always gonna follow Sue. Keep it up, Sue, thanks guys.
Anybody else? Alright. We'll carry on to our action items. And first up, we have the Beach Elementary School demolition bid recommendation. For specialized demo for three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, I would entertain a motion.
So, support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shoffner. Secretary Slager. Treasurer Gilmore. Trustee Vanderhyde. Trustee Patton. Trustee Bowser. President Reed, yes, motion carries. The next act, action and last action item for this evening is the twenty-two-three, twenty-four handbook revisions. And I would entertain a motion for items one through eight. As presented, as it's our third plus reading. Any discussion? We know that is already had. Vice President Shoffner. Secretary Slager. Treasurer Gilmore. Trustee Vanderhyde. Trustee Patton. Trustee Bowser. President Reed, yes. The handbooks are. And it brings us to communication and I have no outstanding communication with the board, you have anything that I've received. Come out of the Fourth of July holiday. So, Mr. Smith, do you have it?
No, no communication from, from my office.
I'll just throw one out there for M A S B, I'm sure you guys get the emails, but there is a summer that's due. Going on, so if you need classes or wanna gain some knowledge, uh, take a look at that.
Virtual interview or? Virtual anniversary or?
It's both, yeah.
It really kind of is a difficulty work. Is that part online though? Although I'm always like deep into ledgers, so I really can't focus on.
Alright, thank you for that, man. So planning going forward, a special meeting work session would be July thirty-first. Do you have enough for a forum?
I will be here in Grand Bay, hopefully, so.
Is that, is that for Monday?
Yes.
Well, so we had talked a little bit about, um, we could couple, um, there's the insignificant work done at Red Hawk. So if you wanted to do a tour at Red Hawk, we could meet there at six. Um, go through the building, go through the renovations and then head over here for a six forty-five start or. Um, if we wanna start at six fifteen, the summer evening, just take care of the business. And then we can tour Red Hawk at another time. So whatever your preference is, we can keep that up.
I'm good with you there and I'm available, so.
I'm fine with you, so.
Yeah, I was actually thinking about asking if we could have a tour sometime. I'd be interested in that, but I'm also flexible, so. The majority of rather just me.
And you can tour anytime. We can make that happen.
And then tour afterwards, then we're not, we're not in the tour, right?
Is that okay?
Six fifteen start.
Yeah.
And then tour after. Right, and then our next meetings, unless we need anything special, would be August fourteenth and then we're gonna have a fast flip right around again to the twenty-first for new hires. See if they don't spring up. Alright, having no more business before the board, we will stay in adjourned and. Seven fifty-seven, thank you.